At this time I would ask that you turn off any electronic devices. And if you choose to appear in front of us this evening, fill out a yellow card outside the front door, get it to the city clerk, and then we'll let you speak in front of us. Also at this time I'd like to welcome Commissioner Fountain, thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening everybody, glad to be here. Always an honor.
All right. Well, just wanted to make a couple remarks before we open the meeting. Remind it to all of us up here and people over there, please, please, please use microphones. It's a courtesy to the people in the audience, people at home, and our media back there. Speaking of that though, I want to address one of the issues, and that is that we are streaming. Been streaming for a few meetings now, and we've had a couple of glitches that get identified to us, and we appreciate the input. I want to explain something though. We weren't funded to begin streaming. When I became the president of council, I pushed to have it done right away, and that man responded over there, Mr. Suggs. I appreciate what he's doing for us, because we didn't give him any money to do that. So he's streaming on a shoestring. And sometimes, I guess we had a bad accident last time, the video cut off just before what everybody wanted to see. So, we try to improve. So tonight, we're still streaming. In addition to that, we have Crestview TV back there, can you also?
Gee, thanks for the past twenty-five years. Appreciate that. I've been covering you guys for twenty-five years, that's all.
Okay, well I'm thanking you now.
Yeah.
For twenty-five years, thank you.
I know.
And if you can't watch it, you can always turn into WAAZ, WAAZ TV the next morning, on Cal Radio Station. And we usually have Crestview Bulletin here, so all kinds of opportunities to see what's going on here at your city council meeting. I said enough about that. Before I bring up the chaplain, I want to say a little something about Chaplain Rob Suggs, because I meet him all over the city. When I went to the soup kitchen, there he was helping out. Went to the Norfolk over Los Angeles Radio Club, he was helping out. You all stop at a radio club, he's helping out, the road crew club. And, but I think the thing he's most proud of, that I want to push a little bit tonight, is his affiliation with the Convergent Coffee House. If you don't know what that is, people, on the corner of Wilson Street, it's a safe area. The kids get to go there, it's not for kids, it's not for families, it's not even people I pay seniors. And so people can just go there and just relax. Well-controlled, they hire off dirty policemen than you, for the senior citizens, obviously.
Than I want to hear. Than I want to hear.
But anyway, Rob's doing a lot for the city, and he's also a retired chaplain in the U.S. Air Force. So after he gives the indication, I'm going to ask him to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Chaplain Suggs, if you would welcome, we would appreciate that.
I might begin with three sentences from our United States Senate. Throughout the years, the United States Senate has honored the historic separation of church and state, but not the separation of God and state. The first senate meeting in New York City on April 25th, 1789, elected the right Reverend Samuel Provost, the Episcopal Bishop of New York, as the first chaplain. During the past two-hundred-and-seven years, all sessions of the senate have been opened with prayer, strongly affirming the senate's faith in God as sovereign Lord of our nation. Would you pray with me? Creator God of all that is good, we invite you to be an active guest in the hearts and minds of all of those with business before this council. Pour out your wisdom and grace on the decision-makers, as they struggle to make ethical choices in the face of competing voices. We lift up to you, our city of Crestview, into your strong hands. Protect us from spiritual forces that would do us harm. Protect our elected and appointed representatives, especially in public safety officers, as they intercede on our behalf. Bless our United States, our service members and their families, all to your glory, praise, and honor, in your most holy name. Amen. Would you join me in a little pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chancellor. Now, have we been opening this meeting like having council members, please sign in? Do you have anything else? Commissioner Warren, may I per? We can proceed up here, if you want to. Okay, but the way it can show that all five council people are really here. I've been notified by the city clerk that the consent agenda nine A has been removed from the agenda. Are there any other modifications we need today? May I ask for action from the councilmen?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
I move that we approve the agenda with the acceptance of the no lighting that's had on eight on the consent agenda.
Okay, motion second to accept the agenda with the modification that I mentioned, nine A. Any discussion? Maybe you're really not here.
No, I'm not here.
Hey, we're going to move on, the agenda's been accepted. We don't have any special presentations this evening, must have been a surprise.
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, good. And so we will move on to the four minutes, if I could add an act about the council, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Hayes.
I move to approve the minutes from the March 17, 2017 special meeting, and the May 22, 2017 special meeting, the May 22, 2017 workshop, and June 12, 2017 workshop.
The city council meeting, or?
City council, what did I say, workshop? City council, the city council meeting, is it?
Okay, we have the motion, we have seconded.
So, sir.
Motion second to approve the minutes from the May 17, 2017 special meeting, May 22, 2017 special meeting, May 22, 2017 workshop, and the June 12, 2017 city council meeting. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Hayes.
On the special meeting on the 17th of May.
Right.
I see that we have Mr. Blocker down as president. I never tried to alter. We need to make recognition.
I have been sent in and brought.
Hey, you made me correct.
Thank you, I'm relieved.
That's why Joey had a cool guitar on there, something like that. Okay, any further discussion?
This is white in the line?
Okay, no, it's you. Make that observation up. The minutes have been successfully passed, zero to five to zero. And so we have no public hearings. And this time I'll log it up to anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Any of you in the audience who would like to address council on a topic on tonight's agenda, or once, or twice, all right? We're moving along to number eight. No, moving on to number nine, consent agenda. All right, may I come by the council, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items B, C, D, E, L, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M.
Second. Hey, we have motion second to approve consent agenda nine B all the way through M. Any discussion? Just go to vote. Ready, check, five to zero. Resolutions, we have none. Mayor reports, we have none. Special presentations in the public, we have none. I'm not trying to set it right to you, but, right. Project reports and comments from the mayor and council. There are two topics that I'm going to discuss, then I will open it up to the mayor and the other council members, and I'll finish with a couple other items that are not on the agenda, just my own personal thoughts. The first topic I have is the local Triumph meeting. What does that mean? Well, first of all, I want to think back to what happened with the initial BP money that we got, which wasn't really BP money. The $5.20 million we got several years ago, was really a fine against Halliburton. And my, a former councilman, Tom Gordon, sat on the ORAC, which was the committee that helped the county commissioners determine what projects we didn't fund. When I got elected, I took over from Councilman Gordon, and I spent another year. So after two years, we submitted all these projects to the county commissioners, and went to the U.S. Treasury Department and sat there like forever. Well, and just this week, just this week, people, finally, ten of those that we submitted have been approved. So the U.S. Treasury Department has that money, will now release it back to the county commissioners, and they will be able to fund the projects we submitted a while ago. Anyway, that's good news. But now what's happening is, with the new settlement, the $1.5 billion coming to the state of Florida from BP, $300 million of that is going to come to, is going to go to the Triumph Gulf Coast Trust Fund this year. Five percent of that, $15 million, will come to Overloosa County. So what is going to happen is, we're going to have to submit projects from the cities, or anybody who wants to submit projects, to the county commissioners, or directly to the trust fund, who will make a determination whether they're going to get approved or not. But unlike the last time, instead of money sitting at the U.S. Treasury Department, it's sitting at the trust fund. And if you've been following the news, the latest member of the trust fund is our former senator, state senator, Don Gates. And that's good news, not because he's biased, that's good news because he fought really hard when he was in the senate to make sure those funds were going to come where they were supposed to come, to the seven counties affected by the oil spill down all over the state of Florida, which was what some of our representatives and senators wanted to do. So that's very good news. So, there had been a movement within the county, that if the municipalities get together and come up with projects, and give them all the backing from all the cities, that it would have a good impact to the county commissioners. And so we submitted the project, we submitted to the senate again earlier in the year, and that's the connector road between PJ Adams over the Raspberry Road, via Reno Road. And on the 29th of June, I attended the meeting with thirty other people, submitted a project for people to look at. And I have to tell you, the people in the room got really excited, because when I presented it, it was right after Jason Offy had presented a project by the county, which would tie nicely with what we want to do. And consensus around the room was, why don't you all get together, the county and the city, and link those projects together, and make it the regional impact that they're looking for. They actually call it transformational, that's a big buzzword right now. But the regional impact, to really water everybody's eyes. And so on Thursday, the mayor and I are going to meet with people from the county, and we're going to take the two projects, try to gel them together, and see if we can build up these strong projects that go in front of the county commissioners. And so I just wanted to update you on where we're going with that. The next topic I have has to do with the Overloosa County Transportation Planning Organization, that's OWTPO. At the last OWTPO meeting, a question was raised as to how we could change the priorities of projects that are already prioritized. That means that the OWTPO, and you have three members right here, okay? Prioritized projects, whether it was one year, two years ago, and then they move up the priority list every year as you vote on them. And we looked at some of the projects and said, what could we do with the change of priorities? And they told us to come to a priorities workshop on the 29th of June. And so I went there, and they had two people from the West Florida Regional Planning Council, a representative from the Florida DOT, and six people, that's all they had, all six people were from Overloosa County. This is a joint transportation planning organization, Overloosa involved, won't send anybody. The issue is, we looked at the priorities that they had, and we made some recommendations that will be brought to the OWTPO in the next meeting, which is on the, help me out, guys, what's the next meeting? Anybody? Sometime in July. I will be gone. I will be, the 20th?
I think the 20th.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Blocker. 20th of July, I will be representing the TPO and the NPO, don't ask me about the issue, just trust me. I'll be gone, and therefore it is very, very important, because Councilman Cox and Councilman Blocker couldn't make that parties meeting, that they know what we, what we ask, so that they can support that motion when it comes through, the change of priorities. And my alternate, Mr. Hayes, I hope you're going to be able to make that meeting. The 20th. We need, we need everybody from Crestview there. You're my alternate, I can't make that. This is the big, right here, that we recommended, and by the way, I can share that, even though it's TPO, this is a public hearing, and we're all in TPO, we're all in the city council, and we're in a non-public hearing. And this is the priority that we're asking to be changed, and that's widening state road eighty-five coming into Crestview. We want the party moved up. And so you should see that motion at the next meeting, and I would ask you to look at, look at this, and think real hard about it, because it's really going to help us here, Okay, the last thing, deal with transportation, is if you haven't seen the notice, there's going to be a kickoff meeting on the 25th of July at the Central Baptist Church, starting at 5:30 PM concerning the proposed I-10 interchange, that will get two different options. It'll be a public hearing, they're not going to take any, they're not going to make any presentation, but they will take questions. I mean, they'll have answers, but they'll take your questions. Having said that, now I'd like to ask the mayor, he has anything to share with us?
Well, I want to say that it shows that perseverance does pay off. And I can't remember how many years that Raspberry Road project has been on the books here for the city of Crestview, that just not happened, there hasn't ever been any, any funds available for that. And I also want to thank Overloosa County for becoming a partner with us in this, because it is going to be very helpful, both the city and the county. So, it's great when different agencies can get together and work together for the good of the entire area. So, thank you Commissioner Fountain, and you pass that on to the commissioner, that it's going to be, it's going to be a great thing for everybody involved. If I could ask one more thing while I'm here, from Mr. Steele. Mr. Steele, how many easements did we still require at Crestview Corners, that we don't have yet?
Two.
Same, same two we've been pulling with or buying?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything we can do to change our approach? Tell me what I need to do.
Well, Mr. Whitman and I, with, with two other people have been working on that. The primary owner of the, of the entire little mall area is, is under, is being sold again, so we're having to wait until it closes with a new owner, so that's where we are currently. It's changed hands and possession, this is the second or third time since we started trying to acquire the easements. And each time we get bogged up in the, well, we're going to sell it mode, and wait till the new owners get it, and we're, we're optimistic, and we're hopeful. Mr. Whitman has helped out a lot, and with our, we were at a point where as staff, we were, we were kind of stalled, didn't know where to go next, but Mr. Whitman's provided some good insight and leadership to help us. Hopefully, we'll be able to eventually get that final, final easement.
Appreciate both of you working on that, that's been a long time coming, so perseverance as I say, will pay off.
Yes.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Fairford. Mr. Hayes.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. A few things here. As you may or may not know, the last meeting, I was at the Florida Natural Gas Association.
Mr. Hayes, would you move closer to your mic?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I was at the Florida Natural Gas Association down beneath the springs. Were there, they discussed the future of gas, and the industry, and it's looking quite well, abundance supply of gas. A new pipeline has come online, that's really not affecting us, but will, it's online with probably the last week or week before. There's Overloosa County Gas, and that's on the board of directors for that, gas district. They're looking at a massive expansion system over the next few years, maybe reaching down to the 38 area, and also up here in the Crestview area. So our citizens will have an option of, whether they want to go gas or electric, and I won't debate on that, since I'm, I'm giving the input system on the board. But I do have gas, I'll wait, I'll give it that. But we were honored by, I guess, speaker, I can't recall his name, I didn't write it down, but he was the member of the Jamaican bobsled team. He was a motivation speaker. And he said some good things, and about they had never seen a bobsled in their life, they didn't know the right hand from the left hand for getting on a bobsled, or anything like that, but they persevered, and that was his message, persevering. And, and the main thing he did, he said they did it through teamwork. And that was the main thing I got of that, working as a team, which he talked eloquently on. So that, that was really good. Jamaican bobsled. Because they couldn't even spell bobsled when they were there. Yeah, yeah, get with me sometime, I'll tell you the complete story. Also, the No Child Without Healthcare is coming up on 29th of July. I think the time is going to be from nine to two, as you know, this is where the Missoni Group, major sponsor, puts on a health fair for any kids with, from anywhere, really, that wants to come and get a free health checkup. They have doctors that are volunteering their time to this, they also have dentists that are volunteering their time, so the kids can get free dental checkups, free medical, free physicals. Only thing the parents have to bring them out, they will provide, but you'll be hearing more about this. I also went to legislative session, since I'm on the, appointed by the state president of our Florida League of Cities to sit on the committee, and I'm on the Land and Economic Development Committee. We're the ones who fight, fought real hard last year for CRA. As you may or may not know, it didn't go anywhere, but the feeling is that it's going to come back up again. So that was, that's going to be one of the things that we're looking at. Our main priority that we're going to, and we picked three things that we're really going to fight for this year, well, for the next place to stay in. One is, the main thing is home rule. As you may or may not know, they really attacked home rule this year. I mean, they really, I don't know what they were thinking down there, or if they were thinking at all. They're out to, they think they can govern our cities better than the elected people here, which live right here and deal with the people every day, and they're a hundred and some miles from here, and don't know anything about Crestview, someone don't even know where Crestview is. So we, we're, that's our number one priority, is finally get some investment home rule. Second is going to be CRA. The third thing, which we don't know or not, is looking at annexation. There are some things dealing with annexation that really won't affect us at this point here, but it's affecting some other cities. So those are the main priorities that we're looking at there. Also, I went to a nominating committee, which I was appointed by the state, our state president for the Florida League of Cities, and this committee here is where about twenty-five of us will determine who's going to be the next future president for the Florida League of Cities. As you may or may not know, right now, Bill Zephyr, which is in Tallahassee, is first vice, he will become our president next year, as you know, we've got PC Woo from Pensacola as a, as a one, as our president, and we also had Mayor Wise, which was one of the first ones as our president. What we're trying to, what we're trying to do, the Norfus Florida League of Cities, in conjunction with the Swannie River, is trying to get somebody to move up into that president's slot. What you have is, we, the nominating committee will nominate, recommend a second vice president, which automatically moves up the first vice president, which automatically moves up the president. So we are, we're very concerned about making sure that we have somebody that's ready, that we can recommend, and move up that, which we'll be doing next year for sure, rec, getting somebody from Norfus Florida League of Cities, or the Swannie League of Cities, to start moving up for that president. So you'll be hearing more about that. Other than that, only comment, I'd like to thank our chief, both chiefs, and our mayor. There was a town hall meeting at Carver Hill Memorial High School, and, and X there, and they showed up. They did quite a well job presenting themselves, how the city, what they do in the city, and took questions, and a few areas were identified that we need to take a look at, but I thought the mayor was going to come in on that, since that was what instinctly left it to me. So, we appreciate you gentlemen and ladies that came out for that, and the community was well pleased that was there with, with your presentation, and that you had a better understanding of what you do to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Blocker?
I have to, one short one, I think, I want to clarify, and I told some people that questioned me about this, that we are watching you in media, watching webpage of the city here, they'll find out for themselves. I'm going to add this just to Mr. Steele. But Steele, I believe now, I've been told that you're the person that does the scheduling of all activities at the senior center, senior center building. Is that correct?
We do, yes, sir. I'll just say that.
What they complained to me about, were how and why come, when the senior citizens are even having events, they come and get bumped and ordered to leave the building? What's your procedure, just walk me through it kindly, would you please?
Well, Mr. Blocker, if you, I guess if you'd read, read the story that was in the bulletin this past week, I explained to the reporter, that was a one-time event, to my knowledge. I've never had any issues with, we primarily manage and let the seniors manage themselves. We offer programs and different types of activities for the seniors, from eight o'clock to five o'clock here in the daytime, and throughout the week. However, we started allowing this one group, in the beginning of, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, there was a local lady, they come in and started this group of, they have a band, and they would play on Fridays, from five o'clock and do an hour or so show. And then, about a year ago, they changed to Saturdays. Now I don't, I'm not sure who the people are, that even, they didn't come back in and, and fill out new forms and, and provide new contact information, because they kind of changed, changed members of the band, I think. However, like I said, I've, I've never had many problems or complaints at all, except with, recently with this group. And what happened was, is we, we told them, and, you know, that the Triple B barbecue was going to be there, we worked that out, they didn't have their event. The Jack Frost event that occurred, through the CRA, happened, and they were not notified, and I told them, you know, they couldn't have their event that night. And I, I accepted responsibility for that, and I explained it to them. However, that has been the only one that I've been aware of. They, most recently, they, whenever there's another event, someone comes in and rents, and the amphitheater, and has an event, then the seniors, people, the band, they complained, they called the police department, because the events going on at the amphitheater are too loud for them to sit there and have their, their little shows within the senior center. So they complained, and that's what's come with all of this. We haven't charged those people to, we let them use it free of charge, because we try to provide that service to, to the seniors. However, that's what's happened, they've become a little possessive. However, that's what's happened. They've become a, a little possessive, in my opinion, with their event. And we, we have to try to accommodate, especially those people who come in and rent the amphitheater. We have to, you know, they're paying for the use of the amphitheater and to have their event. So we, we do let them know ahead of time if, if there is a, you know, event going, so they can be aware of it. However, a lot of times someone may come in on a Friday or something, and, and we're not able to, to come in, because we don't know. But however, I, you know, as I said in the paper, if, if that gentleman who is complaining would like to come see me or contact me, I feel like we could work it out, and where they can continue. If not, then my thoughts would be, and a way to manage it is to, is to go back to having the use from eight to five like we did before, and manage it that way. There'd be no conflicts with any events or someone who, who is renting amphitheater to have an event.
Thank you very kindly. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Congressmen, talk?
Uh, yes, two items. One, I don't miss many public meetings. I did on the June twenty ninth on the TPO workshop that I helped Tiffany Bates, like, we invited, we can get her head, get some family on a flight post-ex. The other item is, I think you overlooked on the agenda, I have a board appointment.
No, sir. Actually, who we vetted, the gentleman, he is just outside the senior. So that he's...
Okay.
The, the Board of Adjustments, yes?
Yes.
And the other one didn't come through this afternoon, so that puts, puts him outstanding.
Okay.
Both of our viable candidates, anyway. I will, I apologize for not getting back with you, it just, we've just come up with that, so. I will, I will get back with your information if you can utilize the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. First one is, when we go to the Florida League of Cities Conference, we have to designate someone as a voting member, as you know, Councilman Hayes, and we need to do that this evening, so we can get that information in. It really, doesn't make it obvious to me who it is, and you won't be that.
Mr. President, I'll be kind to you without, without the four lead.
Mr. Cock, would you like to be our voting delegate at the conference? It's, it's pretty simple, because you don't get to vote unless there's some kind of a call. What they do, they take a voice call, and they always, they always pass like two hundred and nothing. But if there was a, if there was any kind of issue that they thought was a closed vote, then you would open the envelope, you get the vote. So we will designate you and then send that off. Thank you for doing that. The, the other thing I have is that the mayor and I have been working with our Senator Gaynor, State Senator Trump, and spent a day in rescue. And he's accepted to come here on the seventh of August. We just don't have all the detail yet, because we don't know exactly when he's going to arrive, when he wants to leave, and we've got a little bit of time to work that. But the reason I mention that so far in advance, because again, bouncing off of the mayor's, if you take what we're doing with the Triumph, if you take what we're doing at OWTPO, if you take what we're doing with Senator Gaynor, where we submitted the transportation program, and you take the members we have here on the OWTPO, and Trey over there who's on the citizen advisory committee, we have a lot of people here in rescue working transportation. But it's a long process. Former councilwoman, Linda Parker can tell you that, she, she worked these same issues many, many years ago. And so, but I want everybody to know, as she worked those, as our predecessors worked them. We're not giving up. We're not just sitting here doing nothing. We're really working hard at transportation issues, and, and we will continue to do that. Okay, we're going to move on to item fourteen, please. Which will be the staff reports. We'll start with Mayor Clark, deciding a tentative mileage rate.
Gentlemen, remember from last year, this is the time of year when we have to set a tentative mileage rate in order to send that information into the property apprentice office, so they can send out the true notices. After that notice goes out, there's a timeframe, the clock starts ticking, we have certain things that we have to do at certain times to get that done. We also have to set the date for the first budget hearing. What I'm asking for is to keep the mileage rate the same, we don't need an increase. And that we have the first budget hearing. I wanted to have it before the meeting on September eleventh, but unfortunately, that's the school board night, and you cannot, by state law, have your budget hearing the same night as the school board does. I moved it to Tuesday, it has to be after five o'clock. So I moved it to Tuesday, September the twelfth at five thirty for the tentative, and Monday, September the twenty fifth for the final. We can have our final before the September twenty fifth workshop, because nobody else has a workshop that night or budget hearing. So we have to approve it, get an ad run, get an ad placed, and the ad has to run within a certain amount of time after the tentative budget hearing to go forward. So what I'm asking for is a motion, two motions. One, to set the tentative mileage rate. Remember, it can go down. It cannot go up after you set the tentative mileage rate. Our mileage rate at this point, as you remember, is six point nine four six six, and has been that for the last two years. And then I need another motion to set the public hearings for the million budget for Tuesday, September the twelfth at five thirty, and Monday, September the twenty fifth at five fifteen P.M.
Gentlemen, any any questions for City Clerk?
One, three, what's your, is that?
Second. Is there a, for the test?
Good, I have, I have action, please.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Blocker?
I move to set the tentative mileage rate at six point nine four six six. Second?
And the motion second to set the tentative mileage rate at six point nine four six six? Any discussion? Need vote? All right, the record show five to zero, and Perry was setting the tentative mileage rate, which could go down. I need another action by the council, too?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hayes?
I move that we set the public hearing for mileage and budget for Tuesday, September twelfth at five thirty P.M., and Monday, September twenty fifth at five fifteen P.M.
Sorry, sorry. And motion second to set the public hearing for mileage and budget for Tuesday, September twelfth at five thirty P.M., and Monday, September twenty fifth at five fifteen P.M. Any discussion? Do you want to vote? The record show, vote five to zero. Second item on the staff report is approval of two percent increase in water and sewer rates, as approved in ordinance sixteen oh one.
Yes, sir. If you remember back in May of two thousand sixteen, we approved a five-year plan for two percent increase in the water and sewer rates. We need no further action, except the approval of the council to adhere to the ordinance sixteen oh one, as was set in May of two thousand sixteen, unless you would like the rates to go up and down. For those of you who have had budget meetings for the utility fund, it's tight, would not recommend changing the water and sewer rates at this point. We can look at that again next year as we go forward. But two percent increase is not a tremendous amount. You look on the average bill, minimum charge goes from nine fifteen to nine thirty. So it's fifteen cents per every two thousand gallons on the minimum charge for water. So I would ask, the only thing I need, if you don't want to do any changes, is a motion to proceed with a continued ordinance sixteen oh one through fiscal two thousand seventeen. I think I gave you all a sample, a recommended motion. Unless you want to change, in which case we will have to rewrite the ordinance to whatever you would want to change it to.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Roy, will you agree to them, to our adjustment to our, our public, why we put this ordinance in place? As I, I know well why, what they recommended years ago, and nobody did it, and the percentage that they were looking for, and we didn't, I was one, one of those councils that did nothing in favor of it.
Several years ago, I think it was, several years ago, right after I took office, it was a recommendation that we raise the water rates eight percent. We did not do anything at that time. We haven't done anything since then, until last year. So the utility rates, the cost of, of producing water, the cost of financing the sewage has gone up, water rates have not. We still have the lowest rates, even with the two percent increase last year, and one of the lowest rates in the entire area. So we're asking to continue the two percent rate through fiscal two thousand seventeen.
But that was not a recommendation from the council, but from a?
From a consulting.
Consulting company. This weren't public enough. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Ask which? Yes, Mr. Blocker?
I move to keep the increase in water and sewer rates as set for in the ordinance sixteen oh one.
Second, and motion second to move, a motion second to keep the increase in water and sewer rates as set for in the ordinance sixteen oh one. Any discussion? Not to vote or vote? The record show, vote five to zero. And, Ms. Gayle, here, on the clock, the ordinance sixteen twenty four, traffic impact fee.
We're going to play multiple choice. The traffic impact fee waiver will expire on September thirty eighth, two thousand seventeen. Any changes to the fee or the ability to collect the tax must be adopted by July thirty first, with an effective date of October first. The ability to collect the impact fees under the limitations requirements of ordinance fourteen nineteen mandated by your review. The mandatory requirements being the preparation of the impact fee study, and that impact fee study included impact fee data, construction cost indexing, right-of-way indexing, and cap, the adopted capital improvement plan. This has been accomplished and via the completion of the traffic impact fee technical memorandum of two thousand sixteen, and, which was updated by our city's consultant, Atkins North America, and April twenty sixteen. I have brought forward five options concerning the traffic impact fee waiver. We're going to do it via ordinance sixteen twenty four. Option one, extend a hundred percent waiver from October first, two thousand seventeen through December thirty first, two thousand seventeen, given time to fully explore the ramifications of the new fee amount and the graduated percentage increases. Option two, establish a fifteen-month graduated percentage increase based on the existing fee amount from two thousand oh nine. Option number three, establish a fifteen-month graduated percentage increase based on the two thousand sixteen updated fee amount. Number four, assess and collect traffic impact fees based on the existing fee schedule in section eighty six ninety-two, which are the two thousand oh nine fee amounts. Or option number five, assess and collect traffic impact fees based on the two thousand sixteen recommended fee schedule. I had included in the last meeting packet, as well as this one, a comparison of the increases of the general fees. Just take, for example, your transportation impact fees for two thousand oh nine and two thousand sixteen in manufacturing, for thousands square feet. The amount of the increase was nine hundred and four dollars, which was a two hundred and twenty-three percent increase. Let's go down to something residential, single-family detached, one-dwelling unit. Existing in two thousand nine was seventeen sixty-two, existing with two thousand sixteen is thirty-eight ninety-eight, which means that the fee has increased by two thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars, which would be a two hundred and twenty-one percent increase. We went over the way this, these fees were calculated in the last meeting, where it taken up the cost of actually preparing our improvements via what's adopted in our capital improvement plan. And that's how these numbers come to be. It's going to take this amount of money in order to help facilitate our capital improvements. We have included the percentage increase, if you will look in option two, we'll go over where you can tell the generation of what we're calling a graduated percentage increase. On page one eighteen, this, if a traffic impact fee was waived for, waiver was to be applied for a period of fifteen months. If months one through three, October two thousand sixteen through December, excuse me, that's October two thousand seventeen, through October thirty first, two thousand seventeen, has zero percent, that is your introductory phase. In your last graduated fee, fee increase, we proceeded that with six months. Here, we're going to cut it into a three-month timeframe, so we can extend it out in fifteen months. Months four through nine will take us through January through June of two thousand eighteen, present with a twenty percent fee impact. Months ten through twelve, which is July through September of two thousand eighteen, increase it to your forty percent. This is a gradual increase that gets the developers accustomed to a collection of fee, the impact fees for traffic. Months thirteen through fifteen, which will be October eighteenth through December of two thousand eighteen, move it to a seventy percent. And at the end of month sixteen, which will begin January first of two thousand nineteen, arrive at a hundred percent of the fee amount. You have two options. It can be a hundred percent of your fee amounts determined in two thousand oh nine, or it can be a hundred percent of your fee impact from two thousand sixteen. They are vastly different. You generally, the increase between the two were about two hundred and fifteen to two hundred and thirty percent increase between the two, two thousand oh nine and two thousand sixteen. That's sort of the, the nutshell. Option number one, you extend this off and study it through December thirty first. The other four options would require a meeting held on July thirty first in order to accommodate an act. Otherwise, it will be July thirty first of next year before you can proceed with enacting collection of the impact fees, or I'm changing the map.
Question, gentlemen? Call, any questions?
Yeah, I found it, Mr. President. I, I, I understand somewhat on the, I understand somewhat on, on the traffic impact fees. I think we need to be reeducated on that, to, so that we really know what we're, what we're looking at and what, what we're voting on, and how it's going to affect our potential businesses and resident areas coming in here. I do not agree with the large percentage I see, but I think that there's a need to really study this and look into it, that, you know, it affects the, the traffic within our area. area as well as the vehicles that ride on those roads. And as we know, we also have money to continue to take care of highways. But I think that we need to be more informed on that. So I would be more in favor this time of extending the one-hundred percent waiver from October through December of this, of two thousand seventeen to give on time to fully explore ramifications. And if I need to, if there's no more, I like to make a motion.
Well, Ms. Gaylor, I would just like to ask a question, Mr. Hayes. Were you not here for Monday, I mean, at the last workshop that we had, the traffic impact fees?
Two years ago?
No, no, just recently.
No.
We had a workshop.
Oh, I was, I was here.
Okay.
But I can read, I can read, and then you already did brief on it.
I'm just saying that that's what we did at last workshop.
Okay, I was here, but I can, I can...
I didn't think you were...
I can get with her and get brief on it. I'm offering with some of it from previous years, but that's just my suggestion.
Okay. Ms. Cox has commented on that.
Okay. I don't think we should continue to kick the can down the road, which we have for approximately seven years. So for me, number one would be out because we'd be, if we can down the road into the following year. Nor could I be in favor of number five, which would be assessing full impact fees at the two thousand sixteen recommended levels. There are some pretty stiff numbers in there. So taking out one and five, I found number four, we could make that to October the first with the old two thousand nine fee schedule.
Number four is one hundred percent of the two thousand nine.
I've seen, but, but when you look at it against what the recommended two thousand sixteen is, that's very reasonable. They're averaging forty, forty-five percent, those numbers of what the two thousand sixteen was. But, but I believe that we should get it started and not continue to kick the can down the road.
This is, this section eighty-six ninety-two is what has been in effect before when we were collecting, not on the graduated percentage, but it is the total amount that's been collected before. So that is the section that has been used before.
I have a question, Mr. President, that is, on the, once with the graduated increases, they all start at zero and go to a hundred percent. Would there ever be an option starting at zero and terminating at forty percent, fifty percent, or something like that? Is that one of the options? Is that something that's possible? We wouldn't, especially with two thousand sixteen, we wouldn't want to pose a hundred percent of those fees. That would be ridiculous.
It's, this was just what has been done in the past, the breakover point. It would be what the board decides their percentage.
So we could check...
This is only, I could only put five before you, so...
I'm just, I just wanted clarification.
Mad clarify point, this is for construction of the capital improvement projects. This is not for maintenance of existing roads. I thought, I heard that it was for maintaining the road, so I just wanted to be clear that this is not for maintenance of existing roads.
Yes, Mr. President.
It seems that, I recall some discussion at the workshop, excuse me, of reinstating it at fifty percent. Does anybody remember that?
That's what I asked, that's the question I was asking. Do we have fifty percent? Yeah, I remember that discussion. Yes, Mr. Fox. We probably ought to get a motion.
Okay, point, again, on number four, if we establish that to be effective October the first, then we're getting forty to forty-five percent of those numbers, so that brings that close and is reasonable. So that's, that's how I write that.
The percentage between the two thousand nine and the two thousand sixteen amounts is what it is.
But, but we could get it effective October the one if we did that, rather than, all the other ones are kicking the can down the road, or most of the other ones, even on a graduated schedule because it starts out with nothing, so nothing would possibly come about until we were in the next year again.
Those percentages are left up to the board to fill in the way they want to fill them in. The titles of the ordinances allow for nonspecifics, so whichever way we go, our title for that particular ordinance will allow us to, you to manipulate the actual values that are projected.
We can have further discussion. What I like now is action and motion, and we can, after motion second, we can continue to discuss, but let's, let's try to get motion where we think we're wrong with that.
Question.
Yes, Ms. Fox.
I'd like to make a motion to extend this hundred percent waiver from October one through twenty seventeen through December the thirty-first.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to extend this until thirty-first of December. Now open up the discussion.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. James.
The reason why I second that motion, I'm not well enough informed myself and for my citizens, I'm not well known to make a decision at this time, even though I know it's how much it affects, but we can do things that need to be done, but we, we don't, shouldn't rush into things. I don't think my board here has a complete understanding of what's going, of the different five things. So that's why I'd rather postpone it till later date. I understand, Mr. Cox, of what he's saying and why he needs, like, and it's necessary, but there's too many options that I haven't been addressed on, that maybe in the budget meeting, I mean, the, when you had the workshop, which, I'm sorry, I wasn't here, you know, but I'm just not comfortable, and that's why I voted second the motion that Mr. Blocker made.
I've made my point. Ms. Fairborn.
Again, referring back to the workshop, Ms. Gaylor, didn't you present us with a, an amount of money that we would have made had the impact fees been in, already enacted or in service or whatever term you want to use?
Yes, sir. We showed, we showed evaluations of current projects had there been an existing traffic impact fee.
Okay, so do you recall, whatever we do tonight would come into effect until October one, is that correct?
September thirtieth, your waiver runs active. Without either voting to continue with your existing, which is your option four, you're going to be spinning your wheels because it's like you run into a stall portion. Without giving some sort of action, you're going to be just know you don't, you don't really have a waiver and you don't have a mechanism to proceed. If you want the, that's the reason we offered a thirty, ninety-day waiver period with option one, is a ninety-day waiver. The other four set some type of action by the board because by regulations, you must have it in there by July thirty-first, or you can't do anything until next July thirty-first. So if you, if you stall, if it stalls here, it means that you are actually stalled in limbo until you are able to vote on it and enact it again. So the options, like I say, we, what was requested from me and I got was, can we provide percentages? Yes, we can provide percentages. Do you have to use twenty, forty, seventy? No. Can you set a cap on it? Yes, sir, you can. Can you stretch it out over a different terms of months? Yes, you may. You may want a twenty-four-month waiver to take you from zero to a hundred percent. You may want to go from forty percent to seventy-five percent, and that's it. So it's, you have a lot of options there. Each one is going to trigger a different mechanism that we have to put in place. But you, the door is wide open, it's whatever you think your developers can tolerate and what will be good for the, for the, our municipality. We, traffic is one of our major projects, problems here in Crestview and...
Ms. Fairborn, we, we got a motion, certainly, this morning, we need to be talking about it, really, and all that, so...
Any further discussion? Go to voting, please. I want you to brief state your motion.
My motion is to extend the hundred percent waiver, October the first, twenty seventeen through December the thirty-first, twenty seventeen, giving time to fully explore the ramifications of the new fee amount and graduate percentage increase.
And that was seconded by...
Mr. Hayes.
Okay, go to voting, please.
The record show that there are three votes for extending the waiver to the end of the year and two votes against it, so the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gaylor.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. James.
To the hospital, we can have another workshop. He saw a lot, he threw out, and maybe I'll understand all of that. It's just too many options that he's going out that, and maybe at the workshop, we can see about, maybe narrow it down to two or three, or two.
I think we, just what we're seeing here, the discussion here, we don't view that idea to have another session. Ms. Carter, go ahead and comment on that.
Yeah, I just think, how much time do we need? This is basically seven years, all the years, not, oh, Councilman, Mr. Hayes has been on. You're the senior man here, and this is kicking, this is kicking the can again, so, but we should know more on the information, we've had years to study it as a council body.
To adopt option one, that ordinance.
That's what I was fixing to say, we, we need to, if you have chosen option one, we need to have first reading of option one tonight. You may choose to have a workshop at the second meeting in this month, and you will be able to have adoption of it, the first meeting in August. So we need the, that's the reason for the title, sort of generic, but you need to have the title read into the record for option one as being the first reading of the ordinance so we can get it advertised.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
May I make a motion? I move it out ordinance sixteen twenty four...
Oh, we have to have a reading of the authority.
Okay, someone can add that.
Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number sixteen twenty-four reads by title, an ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, providing for waiver period for the collection of the traffic impact fees, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading, ordinance number sixteen twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Now we can take the beginning of action, Mr. Hayes.
Please, Mr. President, I move without ordinance sixteen twenty-four on the first reading and move to the second reading.
We have a motion second to, to accept ordinance number sixteen twenty-four, the first reading, move to the second reading. Any discussion? Please go to voting. The record show votes five to zero in favor of first reading of ordinance number sixteen twenty-four. All right. I do ordinance sixteen twenty-five, you can brief us on that, Lord.
Yeah, brief you, ma'am. Okay. Sixteen twenty-five, the purpose of this ordinance is to extend the temporary moratorium on the medical cannabis activities for a ninety-day time period, which is reasonably necessary for the city to evaluate the most recent developments from the state and determine the best way to regulate the medical cannabis activities and the locations thereof for the benefit of the public health, safety, welfare, and to make reasonable regulations relating to such activities. We had, when we had discussed it, they, they are waived through September first, and we're going to go through December first with this particular ordinance.
The ordinance, where it is in...
Yes, I need to, I need to read that eighteen seventy.
It's got to be changed, so...
I email...
What, what, Mr. Fox, would these be changed?
It has to be changed because if you leave it like it is, you have a period from, from now to September the first where somebody could do, come in, so you need to save again on the fact that this ordinance can be...
We have the... We remember, we discussed, Mr. Hawley discussed this earlier today, we're going to read the new verbiage. You were all given the new copy of the ordinance via your email, and in section eighteen, point seventy-seven, temporary moratorium, we'll read beginning, be on the effective date of this ordinance and continuing through. We wish to strike September first, twenty seventeen, and input December first, twenty seventeen, or sooner if provided by an ordinance of the city council. A moratorium hereby imposed on the opening, relocation, expansion of the dispensaging facilities within the corporate limits of the City of Crestview, including the dispensing facilities owned by or operated by the free dispensing organization. Under section three eighty-one point nine eighty-six, where statutes, the city shall not issue any business tax receipts or license of any kind permitting any dispensing facilities to do business in the city during the period of the moratorium, and shall the city accept any application for any business tax receipts, license of any kind for dispensing facilities to do business in the city during the period of the moratorium. In addition, the moratorium is hereby imposed on all medical cannabis activities by any person and or entity that is not approved dispensing organizations under section three eighty-one point nine eighty-six, where statutes, except where in conjunction with court of law. So section eighteen seventy-seven has only been changed to read September first being crossed out and December first being inserted.
That's good with you, Mr. Hawley, right? Was he...
I was concerned about a gap in there, but...
Sure. Thank you. Any comments or questions before we have action?
May I come out, Councilman, please?
Fred.
Yes, Mr. Fox.
I'm moving it out.
Oh, I'll step in on the medical.
I got it, right.
City clerk, you can read the ordinance, please, so we know what we're voting on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number sixteen twenty-five reads by title, an ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, providing for authority, providing for the amendment of chapter eighteen, article three, cannabis-related activities, section eighteen dash seventy-seven, and for a moratorium, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicted ordinances, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading, ordinance number sixteen twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Now, is this going to take a pick on an immediate upon adoption?
Yes, sir, immediate upon adoption.
Yeah, I know that somebody marked through, it wasn't me, September first, two thousand seventeen.
That's what we were discussing.
Now, Ms. Blocker, do you want?
But Fred, I move it out ordinance sixteen twenty-five on first reading and move to the second reading.
A motion to that second?
Second.
And motion second to move to, Doc, ordinance sixteen twenty-five, the first reading, and move to the second reading. Any discussion? Go to voting, please. Go to vote in place. Record show, the motion carries, the votes probably there. And I think you have one more thing for us.
One more? I get all the, all the easy ones. Uh, we need to, as we mentioned in the workshop, we are here, uh, to request a sixty day extension on the, the, uh, Camp Trailer project. Uh, our time expires tonight. So we are hereby requesting an additional ninety days in order for research and to offer some sort of resolution on our camp trailer, um, um, requirements.
Daley, you said ninety days, but the agenda says sixty days, which...
I'm sorry, I got six, I do have sixty, I'm sorry. Uh, my glasses are not very well tonight. It is sixty days.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Furman. Yes, look at it.
The end of this completed ordinance shall be presented for first reading at the September eleventh, council. At September twenty-fifth, council workshop, I don't, I don't know what that means. You think you have the workshop before you present the ordinance for approval on first reading?
It is typical practice within, uh, that was installed many years ago to have your first reading of, uh, ordinances to stage your workshop because that allows time for advertisement. And then your, uh, second reading comes at the next, um, um, meeting of the board. Um, just as this board has, has moved to do, they have their first meeting being a public hearing, their second a workshop, and their, um, that's the same, um, series that it, the previous council several times, uh, passed have done. They have allowed the, a public hearing, a workshop, and then the next public hearing. That way, your ordinance can be read the first time, you can place advertisement, it goes to your workshop, and then it goes into your, uh, second reading. Uh, your, um, your advertisement gets in the way if you allow, um, um, if you don't allow that extra two weeks. Most of the time, most of the ordinances have already been to a previous workshop, and, and they don't really need that other workshop, and this is used for advertisement time. Uh, this one will go, is slated to go before two LPA meetings for public workshops, the, uh, July eighteenth and August fifteenth. There will be, uh, public, uh, workshops within the local planning agency realm. Uh, if you feel it needs to come to, uh, uh, city workshop ahead of time, uh, I yield to your direction.
Well, I, it comes to you, maybe, I, maybe I got confused, but you're saying we would, we would pass, we would vote on the ordinance before we hit the workshop?
Yeah, keep in mind what's read in there is your title. So, and then, uh, you would, the first, but your ordinance needs to be in almost a final format. So, you will be, you will have reviewed your ordinance before you ever see it for the first time. So if at that point in time you wanted to call for a workshop, then you would call for a workshop. So it, it, it's, you know, the scheduling is entirely up to you, and we'll probably run with whether or not you'd get by with two, two meetings at the LPA stage. You may have three or four meetings, public meetings at the LPA stage. That is the opportunity that's most flexible for the public to come in and give their input to get this done.
No, I understand a public hearing, though, I'm, I'm just concerned about if we really know what we want for the ordinance, if we haven't had a workshop. That's, that's, that's why you started. I, do you want to think of that, please?
No, we don't.
No?
I think we need a public hearing, then we need to see a near complete, if not complete, ordinance. And then we need to have a workshop, and then we need to vote.
Well, you can, if you sit down the, your, your ordinance in your first reading, you come back in and say you have a workshop, or you have two workshops. The ordinance can be presented again for a first reading and an advertising and adoption. Your, your reading just sort of gets your ordinance out into the realm for, uh, action on it. If you want to bring it before council without having it read by title, I guess that's your prerogative.
Mr. Hayes, I want to call on you as a previous president, too, and then Mr. Blocker. Uh, you're taking that off, I guess. It's not registering with the mayor.
Mr. President, I, I, I think I'm missing something, too, as you pay two or two, uh, a, as, as I was looking at this, it's asking for a request for extension. And I, I would be willing to grant the extension to, for them to prepare ordinance for us to look at. Am I looking at, I, that's what I'm thinking.
We want to present that ordinance for you in its form on the September eleventh. Whether you want to call it a first reading, or whether you want to call it, we're going to bring it before you to have some type of action on, that's all we're saying. We're going, we would shoot to have y'all something by September eleventh that you can, um, evaluate.
But when, uh, uh, Mr. Blocker?
Yes, go ahead.
Whenever we're not happy with what we see on that, on that, on that, I, 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 I think we should see what, what, what we're going to be, uh, reading. You know, because we don't have it before us now, so what we're going, what we're going to be reading for first?
Right.
I may, I, I, I'm sort of confused, too.
I guess, I, I think, I, I'm sorry, I confuse you by saying first reading.
Yeah, right.
I, I would like to replace first reading with introduction. Do you prefer it to be entered? You would like it introduced in a workshop, or you want to introduce it in a public hearing, meaning?
Yeah, that's what give me a first reading, uh, uh. I, 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 I'd be willing to make a motion to give us a sixty day extension.
Well, if you're going to take it to a workshop, I got to have longer than sixty days because it takes me sixty days to get to a workshop. My sixty days will expire on September the eleventh.
Then you need to make another request over time.
Then, I'm saying, do you want another request, or do you simply want to extend it to ninety days?
How much time do you need to get this done?
I need to get you to the September twenty-fifth. And that will, September the eleventh will get, sixty days will take me to September eleven.
You say you need ninety days.
That would be another month. Which I'm shooting for the twenty-fifth of September. If you want to calculate it up in days, you're looking at, you know?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four days. You want to give me seventy-five days?
Yes, Mr. ... Since this time, such a hard issue, I can currently say, I think we ought to move this thing to a minimum of ninety days. Before we do anything, and let's get this thing under correct auspices with this thing, but sixty days, you can't do it.
I can't do it. The, sixty days will take me to September eleventh, which is a public hearing. Now, I can bring it in and introduce it in that public hearing, but if you want a workshop in order to, to digest it, you're going to have to give me seventy-four days plus.
So it's, it'd be a public meeting on that day, but it's not a public hearing, it doesn't say it has to be a public hearing on this ordinance, that day.
No, it, it doesn't, but it say it is a public meeting. It is a viable meeting.
There'd be another one, but actually, ninety days.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion to extend this issue for Camp Trailer project in a changing of ninety days.
Second. Second motion to extend the project for ninety days. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Hayes.
Uh, the reason, uh, second, uh, motion, so people will know, um, this is a, an issue that affects our citizens one way or the other. Uh, and, uh, I, I can't see us doing rush government. We just can't do rush government for our citizens. We have to take, you put that responsibility, I think, on us to make sure that we look at everything, all sides of everything, and then make the reasonable, best decision we can for our citizens. If we rush it, without all the facts and everything, or what's going to be in their house, uh, might affect one group or another, because we know it's going to affect one or the other, one way with regards of how it's written. Uh, I don't know how it's going to be written, um, I want to see it myself. And then that gives me opportunity for me to talk to the citizens, especially for mine, my precinct, to see if I can get a feel. Because we're, we're working for the people, not for what we think is what, what, what our citizens want, the majority of them.
There is a draft in your, your workbook from, from the last council meeting, where you get, when you get time to get your land legs back from being off and out of town. There is a draft in there. But what we, we really feel that we need July eighteenth and August fifteenth at the local planning agency to invite what citizens want to be heard in a public environment to come help us, uh, discuss resolutions for this particular, uh, situation.
Now, there are a lot of questions on that draft, and I think that's why we really want to get there and get down into the weeds, so to speak. Anyway, now, thank you, you have your extension?
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. At this time, I want to ask if anybody in the audience, no, I'm not going to do that. Mr. Steele, do you have anything for us?
No, sir, Mr. President, thank you.
Chief?
No, sir.
Marie?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
Reese, you have anything else?
Yes, I do. CRA meeting, uh, tomorrow night at five o'clock. Charter review, uh, uh, committee meeting on Thursday the thirteenth at six o'clock. July eighteenth, the local planning agency will have a meeting here at six o'clock, uh, in order to discuss Camp Trailer.
Madam Clark, do you have anything for us?
Uh, the only thing I had is, I think you all received an invitation to the concerned citizens group, um, dinner, uh, three to six on Saturday at Carver Hills, uh, school all the way.
We just got that in place.
So, um, and also, July eighteenth is, was kind of the city's dinner. And July twentieth is the Northwest Harv Lake City's dinner, so if you have not RSVP'd either directly or to me, I need them to keep on going.
Mr. Holly?
I don't have any.
All right, good, no, thank you. Uh, last thing I would like to close with is, uh, thanking everybody involved in the fireworks we had in Fourth of July. Uh, I had people around me saying that they thought it was as good as what we had last year, at the Centennial. And we really had a grand show, so everybody associated with that, uh, know, uh, could do it on your, uh, are doing such a great job. And now I will take any comments from the audience. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, sir, um, I'm...
I, I need you to approach the audience, please.
Yes, sir.
Did you fill out a yellow card by any chance?
Uh, no.
Okay, we're going to watch you come up, we're going to watch you come up.
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the new reporter for the Crestview office.
Oh, we, we have a seat for you back there.
Oh, there's a seat, I didn't even know that.
Can I introduce you, sir?
And, and, so anyways, okay, so I had a couple of basic, basic questions for you. You were referring to, uh, first of all, you said there were ten projects, uh, that have been, that have been approved to receive funding from the Triumph Gulf Coast Fund. What, can you give me just which the, the major projects were that received funding? And can you tell me what this meeting was on July twenty-ninth, when the, a number of city councils met together from different municipalities and said the projects had to be transformative?
On, on the first one, I got it out of your newspaper.
Yes.
Actually, I think it was, it was in the Daily News. Uh, I did not write down all ten projects, but, uh, I could, I might have it with me. A chapter me after the meeting, I, I did print something out, I might have it with me. But if not, I can show you where to go to, to get that information, what they were.
Okay.
Uh, the second part, the twenty-ninth of July, uh, was a meeting in Fulton Beach, and the combination of representatives from cities, chambers of commerce, education, economic, developed people, development people, and all discussing, uh, what would be good projects that would have regional impact to submit to the county commissioners and go forward to the Triumph Trust to get BP money. So it, it wasn't an organized meeting in terms of this city organizing, or another city did that. The chambers of commerce actually got together and said, well, what can we do to be helpful and follow the different, uh, different cities to get us all together and working together to, to maybe, maybe get some, uh, good projects to the county.
Okay, um, and so for the, uh, what was the main purpose of the, the Walton Transportation Planning Organization meeting? Was that where you discuss, you, you discuss how you're going to prioritize transportation projects and the widening of eighty-five to eighty-five north? And Crestview was the main one?
Yes, it's...
Bear with me, I'm a carpetbagger, I'm coming from Dallas.
He, he thought it's self coming into town. From one twenty-three, you know what one twenty-three is?
Okay, so wait, so it's, so where is it, what is the main project that?
It is widening State Road eighty-five from, from one twenty-three.
Yeah.
Coming into Crestview, going all the way up to I-ten, wherever the interchange may be, or where the interchange may not be.
Okay.
It's somewhat connected still. But, but the Transportation Planning Organization does much more than that. But by the way, I, I miss you, I, I missed your name, was it?
I, I'm Jennifer Genital, if people call me Jen.
Jen?
Yeah.
I would recommend maybe that, uh, you attend the next OWTPO meeting, which will be in Niceville, on the twentieth of July at three P M. Is that correct? And you can tell us, even, what that, what that, uh, organization does is it looks at the organization, it looks at the transportation plans for both Oklahoma and Walton County, how we can work together, figure out roads interconnected with each other. But they, they cover a lot of things, so it might, uh, help you to go to one of those meetings.
All right, and this is my last basic question for you. It's, um, so you, today was it voted to, you're extending the medical marijuana moratorium on dispensaries, uh, for six months? Did you vote to put that into the second reading? Or is that a, an item, uh, on the agenda that was approved?
Would, uh...
It's highest on first written, and I hope it starts there.
So it's an item, it's an itemized, uh, part of the agenda that's gone to secondary, okay?
We just extended what you already have in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Jen, you'll get it.
Well, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Who wants, who implies this meeting is adjourned?